March 11th, 2025. We're getting some really cool things up here, the most high-tech software meeting of all time. But first, with Pledge Allegiance led by Chris.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
So under open forum, this is about a week ago, we got an email that Ghost Robotics had won the Inspire Award at the Box Club First Tech Challenge Competition. And Ghost Robotics won the Inspire Award, which was given to team, which is a role model team. Inspires other teams, demonstrates gracious professionalism, talks with their community, and is inclusive. Freedom Robotics won the Control Award, which is a technical award. Represents a team that uses sensors to increase robot functionality, shows the use of engineering process to develop control solutions. It considers a deep understanding of hardware and software components, shows consistent and repeatable robot behavior, and demonstrates innovative thinking. And then Ghost Robotics was a finalist in the game challenge portion of the competition. They came in second overall, but there was a pretty close, pretty close second. And then Ghost Robotics went on to the state championship. And the news we got as of this week is that they won the Innovate Award, beat thirty-five other teams. That the team had to think imaginatively, show ingenuity, creativity, and inventiveness in their design. And so tonight, we want to first congratulate our outstanding robotic students, I guess, at WWA, Ghost Robotics and Phantom Robotics. They also have a demonstration for us. So if you want to, you know, first talk about, you know, what you did, what you do. And then certainly Val Means, you know, do a demo or whatever you want to do. So I don't know who your spokesperson is, but the floor is yours. Actually, you don't need to, it's, we have a mic all over the place. We're also high-tech here now.
Right, you guys fellas figure out how to work it, so.
Okay, hello everyone. We are the robotics team from Westford Academy, and we really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to come and speak. I'm Eric Mina, our team captain. This is PK, software lead. Ayush, our hardware lead. And Arnab, our second team captain, and Omkar, our secondary.
Yeah, so this year, we are competing in the first tech challenge. And what the robot basically has to do is it has to, it has to extend out into this. Normally, there's a metal cage surrounding these plastic rectangles, and it has to pick them up. And then it has to pull them back, and it has to extend up and place them in a basket. And so the goal is to place as many of these in the basket as you can, yeah, in the two minutes' time, that's about it.
And in addition to building cool robots like these, we also do a lot of yaories and engage with our community as much as possible. One way we do this is through our electronics and our regional summer camp that we run during the off-season period of the summer. And we've had a lot of students joining us over the past three years. It's been growing from thirty to forty to even sixty students that joined us this year. And it's an amazing opportunity for the kids to learn and for us to teach. And it's a great way to engage with the kids in our local Westford and around the other towns as well.
Yeah, and also, this year was our first year running a summer camp that was actually deemed around the first tech challenge. So we had kids build robots that are very similar to ours with our help. They had to design it in their own softwares. And we basically recycled plastic pieces from last year and made up our own game that they competed in. And so, and then we even ran matches with us as the referees. And it was extremely exciting for everyone. And it helped us get the most new team members we've ever gained in many years.
That's fabulous.
Wow, congratulations.
If kids are interested, what do they, how do they apply to come to summer camp and who should they talk to?
So we have, we go around middle schools and elementary schools all the time, giving out our flyers and stuff. And it's available, all of it's available on our website as well if they want to reach out. So anytime they can email us, they can call us, we go out to elementary schools anyway, so we hand out flyers there, email their parents.
Okay.
So I reach out anyway.
And so Ayush was talking about how we get so many new team members. And because of that, we've actually had to start a second team called Phantom Robotics. So even though we are only one club and we work together on everything inside of our club, we could build and send two robots to competition, as you can see here today. And we do this so every single person who joins our club has a chance to work on and build something that they are proud of.
Another thing that we're really, really proud of this year is our electronics camp that we ran all the way to India. So this year, hoping to expand our impact outside Massachusetts and outside the US. We contacted some of those schools there, and a lot of them responded extremely excited about the opportunity of their students getting hands-on experience with our green house and electronics. So we bought a bunch of kids, shipped them over, and I'm happy to say that it was a great experience for all of us. And at times, the kids in fact decided to stay in the lab during recess, working on their robot instead of going outside, which we considered a major win. And at the end of the, at the end of the camp, the classroom really came alive with RC cars, line-following robots, obstacle-avoiding robots, just zooming across the floor, and it was a great experience for all of us.
How do you fund all these parts? I mean, do you have a fundraiser? Do you, how, you know?
So we run our summer camps, as we said before, and we fundraise a bit through this. We have some sponsors that give us some money to build our robots and we have, and be able to do outreach events like this. The summer camp event in India, though, we ran for your cost because we had enough to be able to make it available to them for your cost. And it would be a lot expensive if we ran it at our prices in India for them. So we decided to go for your cost for them. But other than that, we fundraise mainly through our friends and some of our sponsors, like Red Hat.
Something else we're extremely proud of is our Go Baby Co. initiative, where we were able to work with a five-year-old girl named Yvita, who was born with a genetic disorder that negatively impacted her mobility, so she wasn't able to fully control motor functions. So we created a custom power wheels carter with a custom harness, custom controls, custom seat, and like ultimately like extra like emergency stop bars for her parents and stuff as well. And she was able to control that and drive around. And seeing her smile was amazing for us, that she like was able to fully have that, that freedom and that mobility that other kids normally would. Initially, we wanted to expand this in the future, and it garnered media attention on Channel Five News. So with that, we were able to expand our operations to more kids this past summer, which we hope to do. We worked, want to work with Gio, a two-year-old, and a four-year-old named Maria. So it's some positive slope for the future.
Really, really impressive, very cool.
Oh, that's incredible.
In addition, we also do a lot of school-based outreach. So we participate in our school's local freshman club, freshman club fair and freshman orientation, where we hope to bring new members into our team. We also participate in school activities such as Chunk or Treat, where we built a robotic arm that hands candies to young children. And we participated in our school's holiday bazaar, where we 3D printed little toys and trinkets and sold them to our local community.
And then, just to quickly recap our competition season, this season, we've attended three events so far, two qualifiers and the statewide competition. At these events, we managed to get five awards, as discussed previously. Just to quickly summarize them, we managed to gain a finalist award for placing second at one of our qualifiers. We managed to get the Innovate Award for having the most innovative robot design, and that was able to efficiently perform all the tasks set out by the challenge. We managed to gain the Control Award, which was given to the team with essentially just the best coding that was, again, able to best do the challenge. We gained the Connect Award, which is given to the team who has the best community outreach and most positively impacts the community that has done so much for them. And then the final award we achieved was the most prestigious of the entire competition, the Inspire Award, which is given to the team who excels in all aspects of the competition, not just in having the best robot, but again, just like the Connect Award, for having the best community outreach. As it's really important to give back to your community, as they've obviously given so much to you. Again, and then after that, after our state's competition, we managed to secure an invitation to the Premier Meet, which is an international event that we will be attending later in this year.
Thank you for listening to us. Do you have any questions?
You will tell, you will, you will come back and tell us how you did, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely come back and tell us how you did. Wow.
Well, you, I mean, I mean, you're incredible ambassadors for this town, so thank you for, for, for being that. And congratulations on all the, all of your awards.
I think we should have.
You also have, are led by some pretty amazing instructors, right? Can they come up as well, so we can recognize them?
Yes.
Yes.
I know they want to hide in the background, but we know you guys put a lot of work in.
Hello, I'm Alex Mettich. I was part of Grant Dust School High School, Grant Dust Regional First Robotics back in twenty, sorry, 2009 up to 2011. And I decided to reach out and see if this team needed help this year. So pretty much, I was there as a responsible adult to help give them time in their school environment because mentors really are needed for the events to happen in the first place. And I joined at a time when they already had everything running themselves, and I was impressed by that. So really, it was just sitting in the background, watching the kids run the entire thing themselves. So seeing that they'd earned this, their own credit, I cannot take any of that myself.
I'm Josh Tang. I've been the mentor for two years. And like Alex said, we just kind of sit and watch them. They're actually. I very seldomly touch anything. Usually, if I do anything, I'm just used as support to hold something for them. And just kind of watch what they're doing, and they do an amazing job. They, they mentioned it, but they do raise all of their own money for this program. They, they run the summer camps. I was a responsible adult, and I use that term loosely, last year. My job was to call 911 if it was needed. They did everything else. They did the, they got the kids to show up. They organized when they came in, they ran the whole program, they got all the parts. It was really just amazing to watch. They do a really nice job. And Mr. Warren is, or Jeff Warren is our third mentor. He is traveling right now. He's been with the program a couple of years longer. And he's, again, we all just kind of sit around and talk to each other while these guys do the work.
Thank you all.
That's great. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Where'd you get all the parts?
Okay, so we have multiple vendors, like one of the big vendors is GoBilda. And they're basically online vendor. They offer a 25% discount for all first teams. And we can just like, or place the order through the school. We have like money in the account, and then we can just place the order. And we have all the parts laid out that we need in our designing software, yeah, that we just build.
Additionally, many of the parts we can't get online since the robot is very custom. So you see all of those little yellow pieces, the yellow gears, the yellow inserts in between the sides, and that's all custom 3D printed. So we, we have 3D printers within our school, and we're able to custom design the parts and send them to printers and print them individually. Additionally, the side plates on the side of our robot, we also created ourselves from 1A sheets of alumina. So we have a CNC machine as well as part of our team. And we're able to download the software, download our, our designs to the CNC machine, and it's able to cut out the plate for us as well. So we do a lot of our work in-house, like within our team, and we're able to make a lot of parts of our robot a lot more custom than other teams. So it's pretty cool. You want to, you want to do a demonstration?
Yes, please.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's.
I want to.
Online. Oh, sorry. Just take out once. Yeah, we'll insert them. So that's our robot, pretty much. Those are the ma, those are the major features. The other parts, we've kind of disconnected a bit, but we are working on a different robot right now that's kind of in the building process to train our skills even more. Arnab, can we get? Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll just turn my off state by the way.
So, so the blue one, what was it supposed to do when it was fully working, the blue?
Um, the bike repair?
So this arm has a claw as well.
It has an arm as well.
But we've used the parts to build a better off-season robot to train our members even more.
Got it.
All right, we can have salt one second to disconnect and get this up and running.
Let me just work this.
It talks.
All right. And then we can grab, and then it comes back up, goes all the way up, drops, come back. We need to sample underneath it, just for now. And normally, there, normally, there would be a basket there. Yep, and then we can extend out, come back, and then same, go back up, deposit.
There's, there's also a camera on the front of it, on the front of the NR. Lift it up.
Yep, I got you.
There's a camera where it's able to like look through the swarm maze of, maze of samples, because there's many different colors. We want to look for either like our team's color or yellow. So there's a camera on the front of it that we use to like sense the different colors, find the orientation, and the claw will go in into the sample like full of dif, many different colors. They'll find the right color, pick it up, and then automatically move to the top path and drop it. It's pretty cool.
Oh my, that is just incredible.
And both these robots actually have the ability to hang on to these bars at the end of the challenge. So it's kind of like a pull-up for the robot. It has these hooks on here, so it'll go up. It'll go up, hook onto the bars, and come down and pull itself up, and it'll be hanging with the bars at the end of the match for extra points.
Oh.
Fantastic.
I know, you, any of you seniors?
I'm a senior, yes.
Anywhere you're going to school yet?
Not yet.
Someplace really good, I'm sure.
But, but, you know, so you guys are juniors or younger, or so you?
I'm a sophomore.
I'm also a sophomore.
So.
South junior.
Oh, they're going to be round.
Wow, young team, all right. Good stuff.
Did you guys, did you guys like that blue shirt freshman too in this kind of thing, or?
We, we do.
Red shirt, I guess, red shirt.
Red shirt, yeah.
Sorry, red shirt, yeah. That's great. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Why can't I be at this society all the time? You're welcome to stay if you want, but if you're got homework to do, you know, filter.
Let's do their homework. Paul, can you build one of those?
I can build three of those.
Three of them.
We get those to direct traffic.
Yeah, that's.
Someday, actually, someday, I'm sure.
Turn one of those on. But I would like to adjourn on a high note, but unfortunately, we do have business to get to. Next on the agenda is the.
Would ask if there's any other open forum?
I'm sorry, thank you. Anything else for open forum? I got too carried away here. For the board, anybody else open forum? Anyone in the audience? You can see what's right, Kristin.
Always.
Cassante Agenda, first, you have a request for a street road closure, a mobile event applicant to Scott Kinney, April 13th, 2025, from 12:45 to 3:00, on the bend at Fisher Way to the Abbott School. You have a town comment request from First Parish United for Easter sunrise service, April 20th, 2025, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM. And a banner request for Learn to Row, applicant to Westford Community Rowing. The dates for the banner are May 12th through May 21st in front of First Parish Church. Is there a question?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Safety comments?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right.
Public hearing, subject substance and layout of Diane Lane. I think you need a motion open to public hearing.
To open a public hearing?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We do have Melissa Robbins and Matt Waterman on the line representing the developer.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
Hold on, we just want to make sure our audio is up. Go ahead, Melissa.
Is it good, Kristin?
A little bit louder, maybe.
Oh, can you hear Kristin?
Um, we're just trying to get our audio up.
Tell me when to test again.
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the board. Melissa Robbins here tonight for Carlisle Road Homes Inc. Also with me is Matt Waterman. We're here tonight for road acceptance for Diane Lane. You may be asking why we're here again. We've been here for Diane Lane a few times. This is all part of the procedure. We open the warrant by asking the board to set out the roadway. We go to the planning board and get their opinion on whether or not the road has been laid out properly. We work with your engineering staff to make sure that is in fact the case, which has been agreed upon by Mr. Sterrett and engineering staff. We then come back to this board for the public hearing process before we go to town meeting, which is what we are here for tonight. So what we are asking for is the board of selectmen to vote to put this warrant forward for the acceptance of Diane Lane. If you have any technical questions, I do have my engineer on. Yes, Matt's on as well.
Any questions? Paul, you want to say anything, or Emily?
Emily Teller, Texas Road. I live down the street from this. I pass it all the time. And I was a little concerned when it was first put in that the trees didn't get watered the first summer. So they're not really thriving on either side of the road. I haven't gone up into the development itself to see what's going on up there, but I think there could be some more attention paid or replacements made for the trees.
Okay, um, Gus? Okay, okay.
Has staff had an opportunity to maybe?
Ask Paul if he has any thoughts on that.
This was the trees and the health of the trees on that?
I apologize, I missed the question.
So I heard that the, that the trees on, on Diane Way are perhaps a bit desiccated from lack of water. It's kind of.
So if the permitting department is on their game, they still have retainage from the bond, is that right, Melissa? Do we hold any money?
Yes, until such time as the road is accepted, and we would have to replace all trees that have died.
So the planning board would not release that retainage. Do you know how much it is off the top of your hand?
I don't remember off the top of my head. There's not a lot left, just because we're at the end of the process, but there's certainly enough for any trees that may have died during the process. And that wouldn't be released, as you know, Paul, until the planning board and staff signs off that all work has been completed to the satisfaction of the town.
Correct, yep.
Thanks, thank you. So with that in mind, is there a motion to accept the layout of Diane Lane as a public way?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion to close. Thank you.
And second, thank you very much.
Thank you, Westford.
Thanks for listening, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
Kristin, if we verified that the audio, I think you said at our last meeting, that the audio for people watching from home, they couldn't hear that, is up and?
Yes, so we had ProAV out multiple times over the past two weeks. We've also tested it with the planning board meeting and the ZBA meeting, and I'm texting with people to make sure that they're hearing okay. So I believe that we're working out the kinks in that issue.
So next, we have the annual town meeting, which reminder, Saturday, March 22nd at 2020, uh, 2025 at 9:00 AM. Be there. We've got discussion logistics in a minute, but first, here's just a few articles left to review and vote on. Typically, ones we, we waiting for the FinCom to, to, to take a look at first. So first, Article Six, to approve supplemental appropriations for the collection of PFAS. Chief of Player, should we put up the, are the motions, Kristin?
Yes, and just for this one, wanted to make clear that we discussed last meeting that the, that the bids came under budget. So we'd be asking for a motion to dismiss. The board just did not take that motion at the last meeting, so we just wanted to be clear and take that vote today. So I'll have Mike pull up the motions onto the, the screen for you all as well. Are you comfortable on voting that dismissal while we bring up the document on the screen?
Yeah, is, is there a motion? Well, the motion to dismiss is Article Six.
A dismissal.
Article Six.
Article Six.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't bother pulling up Article Six, Mike.
So we can move to Article Sixteen, which is to authorize a select board to acquire easements for the Stony Brook Bridge project. I knew there was some public comment at your last meeting, some questions from the board. We do have a memo in your packet from Town Engineer Paul Sterrett. So if you did have any other further questions for him, he's here to answer that. If you don't, you can go ahead and make your motion.
Well, actually, just because, I don't trust everyone. Everyone home and probably reads the packet, but they may have listened last time, so if you could just give us a, you know, a synopsis.
Certainly, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. Thank you for food, by the way. That was a great treat. I had something to eat here tonight. I thank you for that. I, I'll come more often. So back in, before 2017, Mass DOT had started reaching out to the town to let us know about their concerns with the Stony Brook Bridge, which is the old historic arts bridge on Stony Brook Road, beloved by everyone in town, especially the town engineer. It's a civil engineering wonder. But they wanted to address the guardrails because the, it was not meeting the Federal Highway Administration standards, and that was, is closely tied to our receiving federal monies. And so they have to make sure that everything is in, that we're doing everything that the Federal Highway wants us to do so that we can continue to get their money, which pays for a lot of our transportation projects. So they started that conversation with us, and we pushed back and delayed to the best of our ability. We got a lot of help from John Mangiarati, who was assistant at the time, and he managed to put it off for a little while. And then, one day in 2017, Jeremy Downs, the Assistant Town Engineer, accidentally stumbled upon the project information website for Mass DOT. And lo and behold, they had the Stony Brook Bridge project. It was numbered and was, it wasn't scheduled yet, but, so we were taken aback, and we reached out to DOT, and they said, yep, we're going to tear that bridge down, and we're going to put in a modern bridge that will get vehicles, two lanes across there, and we're going to forget about that. We're just, we're done waiting. So in, in not so few words, we politely told them, no, you're not. And immediately got together with the leadership in the town, and, and we pushed back and said, that's not an acceptable outcome, and it's not going to happen. Bob Price got wind of this and said he was going to chain himself to the bridge, and I told him I'd be right next to him. So, so that, that, that's how it started out. And what we were able, what I was able to do is we sat down with District Three, and we said, we'd, we'd like you to retain, they hadn't retained an engineer yet to design it. We'd like you to retain TEC because they're familiar with how Westford works and some of our particular interests. And we also know them to be an outstanding engineering firm. They agreed to that, and so they contracted with TEC. That gave us a lot of instant contact and access to the design team, which we did. And then we asked for an, on alternatives analysis. That means that they go in and prove to us that the bridge needed to be addressed. We, we knew that it did. It's a 150-year-old stone bridge, so we knew that it needed some work. But their alternatives analysis included a restoration option. And this was very desirable from our perspective because it salvages the existing bridge as it sits today. And what they are proposing to do can in fact be removed 100 years from now, and there will be our stone arch bridge just as it was 150, 180 years ago. So the way they're going to do that is by putting a relieving deck on top of the roadway that you see now. And, and there are engineering principles available to us to make that happen so that it will be barely noticeable. It'll look, look like the same road that's there now. It's not going to be any wider. It's, the approaches aren't going to be any wider. It's going to be the same. We're retaining the, the profile of it. We won't even be touching that. We'll be protecting that. And the real safety issue with this bridge is the, is that there are no guardrails on it. There is nothing to prevent a vehicle from going off the side. And unfortunately, the way, as brilliant as they were in building this, they integrated the side stones that are on the sides of the bridge now with the actual structure. So if it were, they were to be hit, it would, it would also corrupt the arches themselves, or had the potential to, to do that. the potential to do that. So this option now that we have before us is being funded by the state. They want to put this relieving deck over this. They're also going to put in side walls that will match, and if you go to the bottom of my memo, you can see an image, a rendering of what it's going to look like. It'll look virtually the same. The sidewalls are going to match what we have there now in a veneer. So we'll have our crash-rated barriers, but then a veneer of stone over those, so it'll blend. The state's bridge unit, their historian and their bridge historian is working with Dave Gutrod and the Historic Commission. I think they've scheduled an appointment, or they're working with Jeff Marset to get that all finalized. And they're going to work closely with them to make sure that they're happy with the veneer, and we'll continue to work with all the residents as well to the maximum extent possible to minimize what we're doing to this bridge. So those are the basic facts. In order to accomplish some of this, we need easements on private property and on some conservation property. Our next step will be to retain the services of an appraiser. The Fifth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States protects our residents and says the government cannot seize your property without due compensation. So we will have an appraiser and a review appraiser. They'll come up with a value for the easements that we're taking, and opposite compensation will be made to the residents. And then above and beyond all of that, Jeremy and I will continue to work with the neighborhood to make sure that the impacts are as minimal as possible and accommodate as much as we can. So we would appreciate your support for getting the easements that we need.
Any questions from the board? Anyone from the audience? I know we had one resident last meeting.
Yes.
I don't have anything online.
Okay. So with that in mind, is there a motion to authorize the select board to square?
No, I will move to recommend that.
I'm sorry.
I will move to recommend Article Sixteen.
Second. I will speak for town meeting, and I should not. Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
The next is Article Nineteen, which is to update our zoning bylaw to include new floodplain amendments that were released by FEMA. Subsequently, the planning board did vote to recommend this article. I believe that there was a member of the planning board here no longer, so I won't... Okay. I don't know if Bob wants to speak to it or not. Do you want to speak to the floodplain article?
I assume the planning board recommended it.
Yes, we recommended this.
Yes.
I'll move to recommend Article Nineteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next article is Article Twenty. At your last meeting, you voted to place in the language an adoption date of July 1st of 2026. There have been subsequent votes of recommendation or non-recommendation from other boards and committees since you have last met, so we'd be looking to see if the board wants to take a position on this as you have sponsored this article for the town meeting warrant.
So first, any questions from the board, observations from the board?
Could you recap, Kristen, what the votes were and what positions they took?
Yes, I will do my best. So the Affordable Housing Trust recommended 511. The Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee recommended seven to zero. The Economic Development Committee did not recommend 611. The Zoning Board of Appeals did not recommend five to zero. The Permanent Town Building Committee did not recommend, I believe it was 501.
That was the one stating, yes.
And Mike, am I missing any other votes that have come in?
That's everything.
I think that's, those are the votes that have come in.
If you were going to say something, or?
No, I was just telling Chris that it's my understanding that although the ZBA did not recommend the article, they also did not hear and did not hear from the Clean Energy Committee, did not make their vote without listening to them or listening to a presentation from the committee.
And I understand that the planning board did hear a presentation and chose not to take a position at this point in time.
So I think the microphone is yours if you...
Some help getting this thing. It actually, it actually will carry up, so you don't have to move it.
Hello, everyone. Carol Morse, Western Climate Action Committee. And there's been a lot of discussion about this particular article, the energy stretch code going before town meeting. And I felt that there was one component of the discussion that was missing, and we, Westford Climate Action Committee, didn't want to be lost. And that is the issue of the future of our children and grandchildren in a world that is exceeding all predictions in rapidly escalating temperatures, rising oceans, flooding, wildfires, and extreme weather. You may ask what this has to do with supporting the Specialized Building Code. At the October 2020 special town meeting, our committee passed a resolution for the town to establish a clean energy committee, which would create a climate roadmap with a goal of achieving net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. And this was in line with the state of Massachusetts, what they were doing. In June of 2023, that roadmap was endorsed by the select board. This article would provide consumer protection as well as reduce carbon emissions. This is Article Twenty. And this is a key component of our roadmap, to reduce carbon emissions. You were elected to be leaders. That means leading Westford in a forward direction. Our strategic goals have been established and are well-recommended. We urge the select board to support this article.
Mike?
Hi, thank you. Mike Berlinski, Chair of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. I just wanted to provide some highlights in response to some of the concerns and questions that we've gotten during our stakeholder process, and then add one new thing for your consideration. So, you know, we feel adopting specialized code has a lot of benefits for the town. It's in line with our climate roadmap, as Carol Morse mentioned, and the town strategic plan. It's good for the grid as it promotes energy efficiency, which will lead to reduction of electric load. It's, there's multiple options, and so it does not require all electric buildings. It is, there could be some upfront cost, but there would be some offsets with incentives and operating cost savings. The, it's good for the town budget because it's part of enabling the town to receive $1 million from the state. And then you don't have to take my word for it. The Lexington Select Board Member and Affordable Housing Trust Member called it a win for affordable housing. So that's sort of, I think, responds to a lot of the questions and concerns we had. And then just to add, given there's some uncertainty, we would recommend monitoring the situation in town, and at a future town meeting, the implementation date could be moved further into the future. So I've affirmed to other boards and committees that Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee would be part of that, and I would encourage that for consideration. But again, we think there's a lot of benefits, and this should be adopted. So thank you for your consideration.
So, John?
I just have a question concerning the timing. We're doing this 26th, I think, March 26th. The, you want us to pass the specialized code. What grants are specifically tied to the specialized code itself? I know we want to be a climate leader, and there will be a lot of, I think, we think there will be a lot of grants tied with being a climate leader. Specialized code is part of that? And I have a follow-on question concerning the climate leader status.
Right, so I think your question was, are there any state funds tied directly and only to adopting the specialized energy code? Right, I'm not aware of any. There are state funds, including some, available to green communities, and that's where Westford currently is. And then for the next level up, climate leaders, of which the specialized code is a part of.
So we have to get the climate leader status, which means we would have to establish a policy of electrical vehicles first, and that puts the state in some kind of a discussion with us about whether or not we're doing it right or not?
Correct. Other pieces of the Massachusetts climate leaders, in addition to adopting the specialized code, is the electric vehicle policy and the municipal building policy.
We already have the building policy, correct?
We still would need to do some incremental work to meet the climate leaders guideline.
My concern is the electrical vehicle, or rather, in the sense that we are a long ways from getting, transferring to electrical vehicle. And now, all of a sudden, you know, we're going to have to start electrical vehicles first, not even talking about hybrids, and that puts the state in a position of making that judgment for us. Am I right?
There is a state requirement to have that vehicle policy be accepted. Yep, yep, yep.
The specialized code is a good thing. I'm just concerned about the timing. Concerned about, once we get, we pass this, then you've got the climate leader thing we're going to be attacking, and I assume you're going to be after that fairly aggressively. Pushing the board, the town, to establish a policy of electrical vehicles first. Correct. I'm concerned about that.
That is on our to-do list. And, but just like the stakeholdering for the specialized energy code adoption, we'd be working with other boards, committees, town staff, and then ultimately the select board.
Question?
No, it wasn't.
So I guess, here's my dilemma. So in serious support, the Specialized Energy Code, as a practical matter, we were here probably five years ago, looking at condemning Town Farm because we couldn't, it wasn't worth fixing. We formed a committee of dedicated citizens to plan to save it. We did. That's in front of the state, and yet we learned today, I've been asking, you know, is Town Farm affected by this or not? And it's a complicated question because it's a renovation of a historic building, but it's actually more than 50% of the building. So the word today from the state and from our building inspector is that Town Farm would be captured by this, and that means the budget we put together probably wouldn't hold, and we're back to square one. Now, if we're lucky, the state says yes to the application, and we get it under the wire, it doesn't matter. If we're unlucky to say no, we're jeopardizing Town Farm, I think, with it. So that's where I'm coming from.
Although, I have raised this issue, which is that, two issues. One, the developer for Town Farm could apply for a building permit now. Granted that they don't have their financing, and I understand that, and that may be a concern for them, but they could pull their building permit now, in which case they would be exempt from, they would be captured by the specialized code. The other option that could happen is if they don't get their funding in this round, we could move in October to extend the date to, I'm just, I don't, to whatever, to July of 2027, while they go through a third round, and assuming that they got their funding in the third round, that they would be exempt before July 1st, 2027. So I think there are still two possibilities under which they could avoid being captured by the specialized code, so.
If town meeting would agree to postpone it?
Right.
I think the challenge with the postponement, though, is that we know there's commercial projects that are coming into the...
I know.
And so, you know, a multimillion-dollar commercial project that we then exempt, you know, possibly, and then we have Town Farm. I mean, how much are we possibly talking about increasing the budget if it did fall under the Specialized Energy Stretch Code that we're talking about?
I don't really know. I don't know.
Well, I don't know. It's kind of a rhetorical question.
We've been told of over $100,000.
Right. So, which is...
We don't know where that funding would come from.
But it could come from, you know, community.
From citizens.
Right.
Well, it also depends upon if they only make a supply for the, if they only have to work on the new building, and it costs $100,000. If they have to, if they have to fit the old building, that could be a lot more, so. I can't be honest, I can't.
I don't think we know, but I, you know, I mean, that's, from what we've heard, though, it's a few percentage points in terms of an increase in cost for the project, which the project is how much, two something?
Oh, no, more than that. It's, the town's got, I think, it's probably about 12 million.
How much? The Town Farm?
Yeah, I think it's, I thought it was like around 12, 14. But yeah, it certainly is a lot more than two, yeah.
I mean, I hear you, I think you're concerned, and, you know, certainly we've put a lot into Town Farm, but we set sustainability as a goal for our town manager. It's a goal in our strategic plan. The town itself passed a resolution for us to look at, and I think at some point, you know, we need to take a stand and say, yes, we believe in sustainability, yes, we believe in green community. I hear you about the EV, but that's, that's one more step. So it's sort of like, if the first step is to adopt the specialized code, and we do that, yes, we're not a climate leader, but then we turn our attention to the next step and how we meet the next step, if we can meet the next step. I just think at some point we have to say, yes, we're committed to this, and the way we show that we're committed to this is that we support this article.
Emily?
I thought you were questioning the availability. Emily Teller, Time Texas Road. I'm really in favor of this because we have a carbon-neutral house, and we have an EV, and the world is moving toward electricity instead of fossil fuels. I heard Governor Healey today is working to give people who have heat pumps a break in their electricity. So we're moving in that direction. Just like Westford was one of the few towns that early adopted CPC, I would like us to get on board sooner rather than later with the Specialized Energy Code. There are over 48 towns now who've already adopted it, which is over a third of the population in the Commonwealth. So it's coming, and it would just be good for us to be climate leaders. I don't think it will cost the town anything to adopt this, and I think worrying about one project that's been in the works for a while is a very thoughtful thing to do, but I think this is a much bigger issue than Town Farm, and I think, as Andrea said, you know, it's solvable. I mean, we can do step-by-step and get the solutions for those complications. I think we should be a climate leader. I think Westford has committed to sustainability, and I think the next step will be to work into that. And the developer costs and the grid capacity, while significant, are not our concerns yet. This specialized code will help with grid capacity, as Mike said. It's more efficient, and it basically sets a standard for developers, knowing that Westford is serious about all.
I would urge you to remember these young students that were here tonight. They had so much enthusiasm. They were committed to not only becoming experts in robotics, but to reaching out across cultures, to reaching out to individuals with disabilities and finding a way to help them. This is our future. This is our future. I urge you to keep that in mind.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, I am.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article Twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, Article Twenty-four, I guess.
Sure. So Article Twenty-four is a citizen's petition to amend the general bylaws to change the date and time of annual town elections. I believe the petitioner is here in the room, if you'd like to hear from them. I also know that you had some questions for the town clerk and the police chief. We discussed the majority of those. If you have any other questions, I'm prepared to answer those as well from the staff perspective.
I guess. Kristen, do you know if the Civil Committee took a position on this?
They didn't. I think Valerie.
Will the school committee take a position on this article, Valerie?
So I asked my question. So, you know, the, the reason for the article is because of voting in schools, particularly the academy, that the police chief feels campus is safe, and therefore, I agree. We have all locations in town. So, you know, we, a solution is this one, another solution is to say, keep Stony Brook, I guess, because that's, can be cordoned off. And then we replace WA with something else. Is it Highway Barn? Is it Abbott? I guess my question to you is, you know, can staff look at this? I mean, if we, if we were to say, no opinion, or we don't recommend, is there a way around the issue that gets to schools, what they need, which is kids in classrooms? But yet, let us vote on Tuesdays.
Yes, I do believe that in speaking with facilities and with the clerk, that we could come up with other locations for polling. It does require, I believe, a 60-day notice. It would not be in effect for this May. So we could definitely take the next six months to develop that and have the proper outreach. We could look at hours of the day for voting. Right now, we have more over-the-counter voting. So we could look at, you know, if we wanted to condense the hours for voting, we could look at that option as well. So there are a multitude of items that we could look at if you wanted to keep it on the Tuesday, or you would vote to recommend to keep it on the Tuesday, related to hours or location or both.
So that's what I just want to get out to Valerie. So if we have, if we have other options, if that helps you or not, I don't know if it does or not, but.
I guess I'm not totally sure if we think that cordoning off Stony Brook alleviates all of that concern. And I would like to see that fully flushed out. And I, and part of my research for this, I realized that there's laws against, a laws that I'm sure actually reminds me of the consolidation work for the polling locations that happened a couple of years ago. But there's a law that says you have to notify voters whenever there's a change. So I was curious if, if that applies, if you vote in the WA gym for November elections, but you vote somewhere else for May. So are we signing up to perpetual postcards every year?
Or we could just change the voting locations altogether for every election. It doesn't necessarily have to just be the local election.
Okay. I mean, that, again, my, you all know my motivation, which was the effectiveness of professional development in an isolated and near the end of the year. If voting in other places was flushed out in time, that's, that's great. You know, as you know, I raised this last year, so I'm happy to see a viable option come up.
All right, can you step, just a little bit?
Oh, I thought it was anywhere.
We're testing the sounds.
Oh.
We didn't hear the first couple of words.
Okay, sorry.
I was just trying to find a, not only how this board would vote, not only how Town Meeting would vote, if they vote down, we're nowhere. So is there a way that we could, that everybody could be happy?
So if everybody's amenable to the idea of further study, it's coming back with a recommendation. I'm curious, how would we proceed with this motion at Town Meeting? What are the options there?
We don't have any options.
I know, I'm not saying we as the board, I'm just saying in general.
The article goes when Town Meeting warrant.
Right.
We have recommendation or not, and Town Meeting will decide unless, you know, if the proponent were to withdraw it, that's one thing. But if they don't, then it'd be debated if.
I think it goes to the floor and only, and only if there's a motion to dismiss and the Town Meeting votes.
So I didn't, I didn't see if I had moderated, I didn't see come in.
I think that it has to be Town Meeting that votes to dismiss it, as I recall.
Or amended.
Or amended.
Angela Harkness, Town Moderator. That's correct. Because it's a citizen's petition, it has to come to the floor. If the petition, lead petitioner or the petitioners in general want to recommend dismissal, they can, or want to recommend people voting against it, actually, they can. But it has to come to the floor and be voted on.
Madam Moderator, but you could also amend it as well, correct?
Sorry?
We could amend it on the floor as well to say, hey, we're going to do this study, we recommend to do this study or something like that?
No, because that's kind of outside of the confines of the article. That would be a discussion of the Select Board and general meeting.
Or it could be a resolution.
Or it could be a, well.
So that still involves voting on this, and then it.
Somebody else could offer up a resolution.
Yes. We're a little loosey-goosey about resolutions.
Just want them typed up ahead of time.
That's amendments. That's amendments.
I guess I'm wondering if we, as a committee, would like to ask, Kristen certainly expressed willingness to investigate other voting locations. I guess I would suggest that maybe we ask her to do that, because it seems like that would be an important to the future of this. So it's not related to recommending this, but I guess I'm interested at some, after an appropriate amount of time to investigate, if we can come up with an alternative that doesn't create this interference in school.
I guess I'd also mention that in, in prompting this discussion, I've heard from people in my circles that are in favor of a Saturday election. So I don't want to lose sight of that alternative as well, that this happens in other communities just like ours. They make it work just like ours. And that there are plenty, probably plenty of anecdotal benefits to people being able to vote on Saturday. And while that's not my initial motivation, it's possible that the voters at Town Meeting would appreciate that.
And I do want to.
No, I was just going to say, so my, my question last time was around accessibility. And I was, I found a compelling argument that by offering lots of additional sort of counter-voting hours throughout the week, that we actually create a lot of different opportunities for people to participate. So I was, I was along the line of thinking, is there evidence that that boosts participation? Because that would be, that would be a win.
Yep.
But I found it compelling that by opening up all these alternative voting hour times, we're actually pretty much capturing the participation side.
I would also just add, the clerk did research with the communities that do offer Saturday voting. The majority of them have offered it for a very long time, like 30 years or more. But I would ask that if we were to study alternative polling locations, that we also do outreach to the community, community as a whole, right? We know that Town Meeting is a very small portion of our registered voters, that we survey the community of, would you prefer a Tuesday over a Saturday? Would you prefer mail-in voting overcoming to the polls? Those types of things to continue our carrying and engaged community strategic outcome area to make sure that we're outreaching to those populations who have a say in voting as well.
I think that makes perfect sense. And quite frankly, I think we should hold the status quo until we have answers to those questions. Particularly because, you know, we have heard concerns from our police chief and from our town clerk about trying to implement this. And I guess it's 60 days, so Town Meeting's March, I mean, March 22nd.
Oh, absolutely not.
We won't make it for this anyway. So we have to hold the status at least until a year from now, so.
Well, I think the school calendar would be affected, right? So I know when you said the school calendar.
Yeah, my intention was never for this, I assumed that the calendar was already.
But Julie Gilson's school calendar, 25, 26, is in August or June or July?
No, actually, we just approved that, but we had the discussion that we would amend it and re-vote on it if this passed.
So you want to position it all or?
Yeah, it's tricky, right? Because I, I'm very much in favor of further research. So in a sense, I do support this because I do think we want to see something done. But I guess if we, if we all vote no to it, are you or some, or, you know, is there a member of the select board that would be willing to address Town Meeting and sort of explain why we all?
Well, the sheriff has to explain to Town Meeting why we wouldn't, as we did. So, yeah, I will, I will explain that.
Okay.
I'll try a motion and see what. So I will move that we not recommend Article 24. And that we, and that we explain to Town Meeting that we will be doing further research in terms of the viability of a Saturday election, including surveying our town residents. That's my motion.
And alternative locations.
And also mid-locations.
So does that still include possibly keeping the voting on Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Give me just a second.
I'm a second for that.
Discussion?
All in favor?
So that concludes your recommendations on the annual Town Meeting. The moderator is here, and I'm here to help as well discuss any Town Meeting logistics. So we can just repeat that. And Angela, if I forget anything, please come up and fill us in. So again, annual Town Meeting is Saturday, March 22nd at 9:00 AM at Westford Academy. Registration starts at 8:00 AM. We will be opening up the Westford Academy lot first, so please come there first to park. We will be, the Roots program will be selling coffee in the morning in the cafeteria. And we will have lunch, bagged lunch for sale in the cafeteria for lunchtime, if those residents are there for lunch. Again, we have 24 articles. We are planning, through our survey, it told us there was about 500 people that would attend through extrapolation, but we are planning for 1,600. We have more clickers, and we can hook up the cafeteria if we need to. We're working with Westford Cat on the AV system. We had talked about the aux gym, but actually, we're going to use that for recreation. If we do have a little overflow, we feel that we can do lunch and seat people. I talked to Jeff Goodwin about that earlier today. And we will be having the COA van running from the Robinson and Christopherley lot if necessary. But we don't know if that's necessary. So again, please park at the Westford Academy lot first. We will be having accessibility requests coming through till tomorrow. If anyone has a request for a rail clicker or hearing impaired equipment or seating accommodation or proxy voting, please email accessibility@westfordma.gov. And the warrant has been posted. The motions booklets and other material are on the Town Meeting website. We continue to update that with applicable material. We will have hard copies at Town Meeting. And what am I forgetting, Angela? Transportation sign up by next Wednesday, and childcare sign up by tomorrow. Right. What else? The League of Women Voters is holding their preview via Zoom on Thursday evening of this week at 7:00 PM. And that registration is available. And we're really hitting the communication hard with our communication consultant. They have one or two post news flashes going out per day on the logistical items as well as the materials associated with Town Meeting articles for people's knowledge. Could you give those dates? Because I don't have them in front of me. Thank you, Angela. The 18th, I think, and the 20th.
So to encourage people who might not want to stand up at Town Meeting but who have questions, I'm going to be holding two sessions called Ask the Moderator right here at Town Hall next week on Tuesday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And that one will be right here in this room. And also on Thursday from 10:00 to noon, which will be in a small conference room next door. Anybody can drop in. It's just very informal for any questions you might have or any suggestions you might have about Town Meeting. And I'd really encourage people to come by.
I'm actually going to run about the specific articles of citizen's petitions. I'll see you.
Any questions?
So you mentioned our communication consultants are putting out notices. So what mechanisms are they using to do that?
So they're using our town's news flash. They're using Facebook, our Twitter system. And I think they've been putting out several press releases as well that go to WCAT and other news services as well.
Not on Instagram?
We don't have an Instagram account right now. We're investigating that.
Okay, that's great.
Any other questions? All due business. First is request to approve over-the-counter early voting schedule for May 6, 2025 Town Election.
So the moderator, the Town Clerk is requesting this, as she has traditionally done over the past few years, that early voting is allowed by state law?
Would you approve?
Would you approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The rather cryptic discussion of action taken regarding Article 10 of official Town Meeting, that is the open Town Meetings, Bill Taufel's citizen's petition on changing Town Meetings format. And I guess this question what to do going forward, because we'll have a new board in a few months. So some of us will not be in position to work with Bill on that. It's the, I have, we have heard that our state rep wants us to come up with something not, not. So I mean, he, we had the video with him and our state senator all saying that this was a town issue, not state issue. So the other, you know, Tom has got, has had some discussions with, I think with Bill and some other towns that maybe we're going to conquer. I believe it was one of them.
Yes, Bill, not with the team from Concord. They, they also saw it the same way, that there's substantial logistical security questions to be answered. There's, there is action that has to be taken at the state because we're not, can't just change this on our own. So I think there's, we could either just take a position in support of continuing to partner with other towns as they monitor and support and partner with other towns as they move along this journey. I understand that we've gotten some feedback from, from our reps that they don't have a role in this. I'm not sure I totally understand that. So the other thing we could do is send them a letter saying we've been directed by Town Meeting to investigate this, and we'd like their support in helping us to understand the pathway and the options. So I just want to make sure we're being responsive to Town Meeting on this. And I think those are sort of all the actions we could take. We could further reiterate or request to our reps for their support, and/or we can continue to monitor what other towns are doing and if action is appropriate.
I mean, Wayland, I think, has been looking at this for a very long time. And I believe there is some bill, there is a bill out there. And for, it's been out there for a very long time.
It's the reading committee.
Yeah. So, I mean, I would think one logical thing we should be able to do is to, you know, write a letter to our state rep and our senator and say, hey, you know, can you see if you can move this bill forward? And that's something they could do. Because I really, I don't see how we, despite what they're saying, have the sole authority to make changes.
We don't. It would have to be a home rule petition that we would have to take a lot of action with. And I'm not sure we would do that on our own. I think we might do that in confederation with other towns, once a plan was pretty well established.
Has anybody, have any of you looked at Wayland's proposal?
I have not beyond just what you just said, that it, it sort of was introduced a while ago and didn't go anywhere.
Should we take a look at that Wayland proposal? See if we wanted to craft something similar to that? Support something similar to that? I mean, can I have that discussion of whether or not, you know, we stick with main Town Meeting, just place Town Meeting in person or we're going remotely, right? That's the whole issue, is making it open to citizens remotely. And that's a big, that's a big scare.
So we, we could, I think one step we could take is to sort of, I guess, refresh the study of what exactly they proposed and what happened, and then come back and make some recommendation based on that. The, the issue is, you have to figure out a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of logistics about how you do it, how you do it in a secure way, who can participate, how do they participate remotely? There's, there's a bunch of costs and infrastructures around setting this thing up. I don't think any one town is going to be able to take that on, on their own.
And just the security of it.
Right.
Possibility to get compromised, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, if the board was interested in just getting a refresh on exactly where the Wayland motion is, we could, we could do that. But I don't know well enough to suggest at this point we'd want to endorse what they did. I don't know what they did.
So in.
Because otherwise, we're in the dark.
July 11th of 2023, your board sent a letter to state senator and representative supporting House Bill 3025, an act relative to remote access for public bodies and Town Meetings. I believe that that may have been the Wayland bill. So we could, and again, this was before the resolution at Town Meeting. So we could refresh what the bills are currently in the process.
So I think somebody, I think maybe it was you, provided us with a 4 or 5, what we're currently out there.
So that was in 2023?
Correct, July of 2023, so almost two years ago.
I think you need to find out whether the bill's been refiled because it's, there's a, you know.
Right, a new session, yep.
There's a new, it's a new session, so they would have had to refile the bill.
Okay, and I think that makes sense as an action for us to, at a future meeting, kind of update ourselves of the status and write a letter of support as appropriate.
So you'd prefer to get the, the status of the bills and then move forward with your review and then?
I think so, because otherwise, I'm not sure what we need.
Yeah, absolutely, sure. I just want to make sure I was clear on.
I'm not going to understand what's in the bills, huh?
Yeah. Any thoughts on working groups, subcommittee, somebody that, that, you know, we asked to do a deep dive on some of these pending bills? And to your point, not just understanding what's in the bills, but all the technical challenges that might be associated with implementation of some of these options. of some of these options?
One thing I could do is I could circulate the working paper that Concord has done, which speaks to some of these things. Sort of says, here's the issue, here's one approach, then here's another issue, here's one approach. So it sort of flushes out the complexity of what this is. We may want to take a look at that before we decide if we want to spin up our own working group, which might more or less replicate.
Somebody's already done the work, let's use it.
Yeah, that sounds great.
No need to reinvent the wheel.
Yep, yeah. It'd be great if you could share that.
So I think we know what to do?
Have that down, yes.
Which way, any board of course updates?
So I don't really have an update, but I feel like this is now, I don't know, eighth meeting where we never really make very good use of this section of the meeting. So I'm just thinking, like, is there a way that we can be, I brought this up in the past, like, any updates on maybe some of the big capital projects? Doesn't have to be every meeting, obviously, but maybe once a quarter. We have million-dollar-plus capital projects for roads, culverts, and buildings, and just think, we don't, we don't really have a good, I don't feel like we get as much of an update or have our fingers on the pulse of these projects as perhaps we should. I know I go out of my way for a lot of the pedestrian safety projects to be like, hey, where are we, or, you know, the park and rec projects, where are we with these, and try to understand, you know, are we running into any roadblocks, cost escalations, other issues? So I thought maybe once a quarter, maybe semiannually, some of that information is processed more for education.
I have a suggestion.
Please.
So now that we've adopted this, and I actually have your comment on my ticket list, right?
Oh, all right.
But now that we've adopted the strategic plan, and we've committed to giving updates on the strategic plan and our strategic outcome areas, to wrap that into updates, and capital planning projects would certainly be part of that. So that's just one suggestion. We're obviously also going to have a new board in a few months, so perhaps broaching how they want to address that as well, but that would be my suggestion.
You can wait until the new board's in place.
Let the chair, vice chair figure that out.
Sure, you'd like that, wouldn't you?
I do have a board update for economic development, and I don't mean to step on Tom's toes, but the Economic Development Committee is hosting a business breakfast this Friday morning at NetScout, so any member of the public who owns a business or is involved in business, I know Scott's going to attend for the select board, I don't know if other members are able to attend, but I'll be giving a small speaking point. Cheryl, the chair, will be as well, as well as our economic development consultant, and then we have a panel of business owners of why they've chosen Westford and why they continue to stay in Westford. So just wanted to put a plug in for that.
What time is it?
It is, starts at eight-thirty for networking, and then I think the program kicks off at nine.
When's the consultant due to come back to us?
I think they were just with us two meetings ago, so.
That's when they gave us the whole update on the logo and.
I think it was two or three meetings ago, but I could be wrong.
I think it was only a month ago.
She seems a long longer than that.
So I think they have a few more months.
What do you mean, they don't have an update?
I think they have a little bit more time.
Too nice, I would have.
First, we might want to meet in the Robinson School Committee.
Do you want to do that, or do you want me to do that? Sure, absolutely.
They got some tours of the building.
Yeah, so the Robinson School Building Committee held a public forum today at the senior center for the feasibility study. We had two attendees, but it was a great dress rehearsal. And then tomorrow evening, we'll be hosting tours at the Robinson School from six-thirty to seven-thirty, and then having an informational presentation starting at seven-thirty there. And then on Saturday, there'll be tours as well.
AM or PM?
Sorry?
AM or PM, just.
Excuse me. Tomorrow at seven-thirty PM is the presentation, six-thirty PM are the tours.
So make sure our listeners.
And then Saturday, they're.
Ten AM, right?
I believe the tours are ten to, let me try to pull up the newsflash.
Ten to noon?
Ten to noon or ten to one on Saturday. Here we go. Saturday, ten-thirty to one PM, ten-thirty AM to one PM, just tours only. And then we do have informational documentation on the website available.
And one other item, so on Friday, March twenty-first, Christian Disability is hosting an event for Neurodiversity Week. It's a community Lego building event at First Parish Church.
And they did this last year, and it was a whole lot of fun.
So I invited the board, I actually also invited the select board candidates as well to, if they want to see what Christian does and have some fun. But anyways, welcome. Management report.
Sure, hopefully quick this evening, because I know you've been here for a while. So first request to appoint Assistant Town Manager Jeff Morissette as Acting Town Manager between March twenty-sixth through March thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then several contracts from DPW for Newport Construction Corporation for hot mixed asphalt paving and associated work in the amount of nine hundred forty-seven thousand seventy-five dollars as requested by the Public Works Department. That is our annual road paving for the year, and we'll be getting out information on what those roads are to the public. The next is New England Stormwater Management LLC for townwide catch basin cleaning services in the amount of sixty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty dollars as requested by the Department of Public Works, and Millennium Maintenance and Power Sweeping for townwide street sweeping services in the amount of fifty-one thousand five hundred and three dollars and eighty cents.
Move to first?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to waive rating of correspondence?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And?
We're cheering.
Second.
Favor? Good night, Westford.
Good night, Westford.